Good evening, everyone. Right, it's seven o'clock. Welcome to the June Cabinet meeting. I don't think we have any members of the public here, so I won't bother with the announcements about evacuation and the facilities. You know all of that. Apologies for absence.
Just from councillor Foster.
Who is recovering from a knee operation. Right, moving on. Anybody declarations of interest now or when the relevant item comes up? Okay, three minutes of the meeting on the 8th of April. Can I sign those as...? Thank you. Public questions? He's not here. Where were we expecting him? No, okay. Have you all seen, has everyone seen the question? It's really short, about museum charges. I'm happy to answer that and I've written it here. I'll send it to you, so you can put it in the minutes. So save you having to type it down. I think, as everyone in the room knows, Chancery City Council in common with every other council in the country is facing huge financial challenges and the cost of emergency housing and fuel, as you know, have more than trebled. And so the city council had to find savings of more than £4 million in order to balance the budget. And that, of course, as you know, is the context for charges at the museum. And the museum will still cost residents over £800,000 a year. And charges, as I think you are aware, were explored and signed off as part of the wider proposal for securing the financial sustainability of the venue. As you know, there's a broad range of initiatives, including membership, so that we can offer actually a wider range of facilities, events and things like that to the public, particularly for children, for whom membership will remain free. We're also hoping to have more commercial events, venue hire, and improve our retail offer. And as, as members here know anyway, not every decision has to come to a formal meeting, so many items can be decided under delegated powers. So Cabinet deputy councillor Large was regularly consulted and briefed on the changes. She briefed Cabinet and a final proposal was approved by the relevant director on the 24th of January, under the scheme of delegation as set out in the Constitution. Right, okay. Cabinet questions, moving on. Who's first? Councillor Thorp, perhaps? I think you've told us in advance.
I have all in advance.
Would you like to put your microphone?
When the argument comes up.
Why don't you do it now?
So it relates to the Community Infrastructure Levy Governance Review. Neighborhood allocation being SIL money is retained by the parish, hosting development and spent within the local area. On supporting infrastructure sits at 15% of SIL funds, or 25% as we know if the parish has a neighbourhood plan. On the so-called strategic allocation, which sits, which, sorry, which makes up 70 to 80% of SIL funds therefore, is retained by a city council. The report notes that this is spent generally on infrastructure in the, in the council's area, supporting development set out in the local plan. Further notes that strategic SIL receipts that arise from the South Warden Ferrars strategic growth area will be ring fenced to support infrastructure that is required to support development in that town. But the question is, there's no such ring fencing for Strategic Growth Site Two, Warren Farm. Can this disparity be explained, please? We know significant infrastructure is needed to support the Warren Farm development and given the city council has discretion to ring fence strategic allocation funds, can this discretion please be applied to Warren Farm as well? Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councillor Moore.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for your question, councillor Thorp. As you know, we will be looking at SIL in more detail later in the meeting. I'm very thankful to you for raising the question in advance. So I'd just like to qualify that in order to fund required infrastructure in Chelmsford, in the district, a number of financial mechanisms are used. Strategic SIL, or Community Infrastructure Levy, is one. Pulled into one fund, which can be used for infrastructure needed to support new development across the council's administrative area. Most developments across the area have cumulative impacts and they are best mitigated using the strategic SIL pool to the most needed improvements. So you ask about South Warden specifically. South Warden Ferrars is defined as, is a defined settlement and this is outlined in the local plan. You can see page 52 of our current local plan for more detail on the settlement hierarchy. So because it's a defined settlement, it's likely that the impacts from the strategic growth area in the town of South Warden Ferrars will be felt within the settlement itself. So it's therefore appropriate to ring fence that spend of SIL within the area. But for other sites, such as Strategic Growth Site Two, Warren Farm, the impacts of the development are more likely to be falling across the city centre area. So it's therefore helpful to be able to pool our strategic SIL and to prioritise accordingly. The S106 agreement for the site will ensure that site-specific infrastructure requirements are delivered separately to any SIL collected. And this will also ensure that the site is acceptable in planning terms. And I understand that Riddle Parish Council does indeed have a neighbourhood plan and will be benefiting from a SIL allocation of, I believe, £2 million from the development at Warren Farm. So I applaud you for having that neighbourhood plan and I'm very pleased that your residents will be benefiting in the parish of Riddle, as will the area adjacent when Warren Farm comes forward. Thank you.
Yep. Is this on this question or a different question?
It's a different question. So I didn't know whether you... I mean, item 6.1, I've got several questions, but I didn't know if it's more appropriate to wait for it to be presented and then ask the questions.
Okay, yeah, I think that probably will be.
Okay, thank you.
Present the item and then go through it. Right, any other questions? Councillor... Sorry. Yeah. So councillor Bonnet.
Mine will be on agenda item 9.2, but it's probably better to take it when it comes.
Take it at the time, okay. Any other? Is yours on a non-item, non-agenda question? Yeah, you have a non-agenda question, okay. Yeah, you did. Yes, I was just checking that that was...
Yeah, I haven't checked.
That was the only question that you had. Or do you have more?
I have two. So my question to the Cabinet is, do you think that residents see the Lib Dems gardener's tax for green waste being charged as another stealth tax? Charging the public twice and for doing the right thing by recycling?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you councillor Highland for your question. This administration has held off making a charge for garden waste collection for several years. In fact, Chancery City Council are one of the last district councils to introduce a charge in the country. Council costs have been increasing due to national budget pressures such as rising homelessness, high inflation and the impact of higher interest rates. Council income, on the other hand, is lagging behind these extra costs. We estimate that we've lost in real terms funding from the previous Conservative government of around £11 million a year, and this is since 2010, 2011. And announcements for the current, from the current Labour government do not appear to be increasing funding for well-run councils such as ours. The council has statutory duty to collect general waste and food waste free of charge from domestic properties in the city council area. Free of charge in this case means without a separate charge to individual householders. Effectively, these, these costs being met from charges for other services such as car parking. Council tax does not even cover the cost of services that Chelmsford City Council is required to provide. However, this statutory duty does extend to all materials, doesn't extend to all materials collected from the curbside, garden waste being one of these for which the council can make a charge. This is set out in the Controlled Waste Regulations of 2012. This is an opt-in service and residents have the choice on whether to sign up for it or not. Advice has been provided on alternative forms of recycling, including home composting or taking garden waste to the local recycling depot. Up until yesterday, the 2nd of June, 36,801 households had paid for a garden waste collection, equivalent to 54.5% of eligible properties. I believe that the garden waste service is a valued service and those 36,801 residents that have signed up seem to agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So is there a cap on the stealth tax increases? Like on our council taxes, a cap of 5% or £2.99? And then what is the next tax? The can bin tax or recycling paper bag tax? All on top of existing council tax? It feels like a slippery slope. Perhaps an alternative suggestion? Council tax could be scrapped altogether and residents asked to pay as you go for council services and see how valued councils really are by our residents. The arguments for green bin charges don't stack up. This is because it impacts the amount of positive recycling, penalises the poor parts of our society and punishes those with a passion for keeping the UK green. The charges should already be covered by our council taxes that we already pay. Focusing on people with green space is the wrong way to raise additional revenue. This council could consider a U-turn. Binning the tax or maybe offering one free collection a month to all households, keeping your gardener's tax for more regular mowers. So as I asked, what is the next tax to be imposed? Thank you.
So council tax is kept, as you're no doubt aware. At this moment in time, I don't believe that there is going to be other charges introduced. I'm sure I'll be corrected if I'm wrong.
You'll have to wait for the next budget before we talk about budget issues. Yeah, I like your... I know, not histrionics, because it wasn't quite histrionic, but hyperbole, shall we say. There's nothing stealthy about it. We told an awful lot of people about it and as councillor Ely has said, over half the people eligible have signed up for it. And also, it doesn't penalise the poorest people because, as she said in her answer, they get, the people on council tax support get a discount. And also, the, most of the, many of the low-income families live in flats and smaller houses that are not, don't even, don't have a garden. And so in fact, people who have big gardens have been subsidising those people for many years and they aren't doing so anymore. So, and the councillor Davison says, the budget will be set at budget time. And I'm sure we have lots of questions then. No, well, residents, so residents didn't get a... Well, in 2019, they got a say in the general election. They voted for a government that cut our money, so that's where the blame lies. Right, any other questions on items not on the agenda? Yours was not, not related to the agenda. And you had another question, okay. Councillor Whitehead.
Only relates to that statement that came out from government today about accelerating the local plans and making sure you did them as quickly as possible. Can anybody tell us where we are currently with our local plan situation and the possible dates to make sure that we're within those particular parameters?
We are, as far as we know. Within... Jeremy, hotter?
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, in relation to the local plan, we have achieved the relevant milestones to go through the transitional arrangements. We are preparing the submission version of the local plan that will come to policy board. And the next policy board, your members of that policy board will see the feedback from the most recent consultation leading to a submission of the plan for examination later on in the year.
Okay, councillor Highland.
Thank you, Chair. On the issue of local government review, what are the headline figures being used for each of the council involved in assessing the size of the transition? And where is there a cost-benefit analysis of this, that we need to do this?
Where do you start? And this is, as I've said before, this is something that occupies my time, chief executive's time with endless meetings. We've already spent an awful lot of time and we will be spending money. We've just heard today that the government is making available some money to help with the cost of preparing the bids and so on. So all the, all authorities that are affected, which is the 12 districts, the two unitaries and the county council, are working on proposals. I'm pleased to say, I think, that at the moment there appears, there's only two, two different camps. In other counties, there are three or four or five proposals being worked up. So there is a, there was a report prepared by PricewaterhouseCoopers, which was commissioned by the county council network for the county councils primarily. The government is using that report framework for the whole country. It contains a number of inaccuracies, some mistakes and is generally felt an 1-5-1 officer. All of them have been looking through this report and discovering a lot of holes in it. And so at least, I think, I think I can say at least 10 of the district councils in Essex are commissioning some alternative work, which will be more sort of district-oriented, bottom-up grassroots assessment rather than a generic nationwide top-down assessment of what is actually involved in creating new councils. As, as you know, I've said before, my ambition is that local government should remain as local as it possibly can. This reorganisation will cost a lot of money upfront. Whether it saves any money in the long term is possible, but it's not going to be in the next five or six years. So, but the government wants to press ahead. We have to do our best for our residents and that's what we're going to do. There will be, as I say, probably two submissions, submitted by the deadline of the 26th of September. And when the one that the, the group of 10, which might be nine, might be 11, we shall see over the next few weeks. But that case, which Chelmsford is part of, will come back. We will do a report to Cabinet probably in July. Will we do a report in July?
I think it might be August, but I think...
Might have a special meeting.
We'd want to have a special meeting of councils so we can brief them. So it won't be a council meeting, sorry. It will be a briefing of all members before it goes to Cabinet. It's unlikely we'll get the financial information back from the consultants until mid to late July. So it's looking like, I know August tends to be the holiday season, but it's probably going to be August or early September.
Okay.
I think the monitoring officer told us that if LGR was discussed, we county councillors had to declare an interest, didn't you? It's not on the agenda, so I didn't say anything early.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about that. I'm about to put through for governance committee, which you sit on, a report around a general dispensation that will cover off that issue. But yeah, no, you are right. We did give some advice that councillors should declare an interest, but I actually think it should be dealt with as a dispensation. So, no, you are correct. Yeah, there are quite a few people that would be declaring interest, yeah.
We all have an interest in such things. Okay, all right. Okay. Is this on that, follow-up on that one?
Yeah, if you don't mind. So, I mean, the key for me is the metrics, what you're working on. But how many council officers, how many CEO, how many councillors' hours have been consumed to date and are forecast to be used before vesting day? And also, what are the metrics that you're using to look at how councils measure up and helping you make that decision in what the transition is going to be? We haven't seen any of that data yet and it would be good to see that information. And will our residents get rebates for their council tax for your lost hours? And the others, the lost hours as a whole?
You have to direct that question to the government. As I said, we didn't want, we didn't want to do this. The government have told us that we have to do it. And there, when Nick Evely and I gave our presentation to all members six or eight weeks ago, we explained, in the presentation, there are, there are six sort of headings or criteria that the government is using, one of which is financial sustainability. The others are delivery of public services relation to local government, to devolution, how the LGR works with devolution, and particularly sense of place. For me and for the group of 10 that is working on the, making the case for five unitary authorities, it's the sense of place that really matters. And being, having councils which are accountable, transparent, that you can get hold of your local councillor and are not actually larger than many county councils, which is what Essex is proposing, is two or three mega councils which are larger than most county councils. So that's, that's where we are. It's impossible to quantify in, in pounds exactly how much it will cost. We know it will actually cost a lot of pounds and then there'll be offers of time on top of that. Right, moving on, I think. So the next item on the agenda, item six, is Beaulieu Station car park fees and charges. Councillor Goldman.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I've got to pass this over to councillor Sherlock, but you have to come through me due to protocol. So I will pass you over to councillor Sherlock.
Thank you. So I'm pleased to present this paper on the new Beaulieu Station car park with regards to fees and charges. Car Park A is located adjacent to the station entrance and has 290 spaces, with 38 of these spaces being free for blue badge holders. The council is responsible for management of Car Park A and therefore needs to set out the fees and charges prior to it opening later this year. The charges for hourly rate and full day parking are set out in the report and are competitive to other similarly operated station car parks. This has been brought to Cabinet as the gross income is over £200,000. As laid out in the report, the anticipated net income from Car Park A is £103,533. I hope you will approve the fees and charges that I presented.
Yes, councillor Jeeps.
Thank you, Chair. There's two parts to this. The first part is the fact that the residents of the Beaulieu area went to consultation about permit parking because obviously any parking that takes place where there's a charge, people look to find something for free. Can you tell me when the permit parking will be in place in Beaulieu area? First question, thank you.
Thank you. So I think this would be an area that comes under SEP. Is it Aug?
Yeah, the, those plans are progressing and the permit parking will be in before the station opens. And I'll try and get you a more specific date tomorrow, but it will definitely be in before the station opens.
Thank you very much, because obviously residents are getting anxious about the fact we've got car park parking being advertised without the permits being in. The second question, as you say, it's competitive and it's, I'm relying on websites being up to date, but Townfield Car Park is £10.50 for the day and we're charging £11.50 at Beaulieu, so obviously more expensive. If you go in your car, which I don't think we all want people to do down the A12, Shenfield is £7.60 a day. So I'm just wondering whether that's being considered in terms of looking at the competition. Plus, I think Townfield offers a weekly fee of £42. And of course, on top of the rail costs as well, people do look to find savings as far as possible. So has that all been considered and why are we charging more at Beaulieu than we are in the town centre?
So we looked at a number of car parks, not just the ones that you've mentioned. And there's certainly a station car parks that are higher than that fee. And we've just said it just above the charge in Chelmsford. I think we didn't want to have displacement from the city centre to the new car park. Is anything else Paul had missed on that? Yeah.
So has it been considered that people might travel in and park where they've probably always parked rather than use the new station and use less, you know, it would be less mileage and less cars going into the town if we attract them, at least made it the same price as the Townfield Park?
I think with the car park, you're going to have people coming from a, from a wider area. So, you know, you may have people coming from Whitam and other areas. So, I mean, we want people parking in both of our car parks.
Thank you for that. It just seems to me if you're making it more expensive and there is no weekly fee, is that being considered and disregarded then?
I mean, you can, you can do a weekly on the my permit charge on the my permit pass.
So how much is that for Beaulieu? It's £42 in Townfield. How much will it be for Beaulieu? And why isn't it in the paper?
The, this cabinet report is to set the fees. There will be, we are looking at season tickets. They're, we're still working through that, so they'll be introduced in delegated authority. So this report is about the daily fee that we're, we're looking to get approved. And just following on from what councillor Sherlock said, that we've looked at all station car parks within the region and this is competitively priced to it. And we are very mindful that we don't want a lot of displaced car parking going from the city centre to Beaulieu because it is, there's a limited number of spaces. With those 290 of that, that may not be many. So we don't want everybody going from the city centre that currently parks and use the Chelmsford train station to go to Beaulieu. So this is priced to control that displacement as well.
Thank you for that. When, when we, will the public be likely to see the other charges, except, you know, the weekly permit, that kind of thing as well?
All, all the charges will be agreed and in place before the station opens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On this report? Yeah, okay. We should be more generous than councillor Whitehead and let more than one Conservative speak on this item. Well, but just to remind you...
Based on what councillor Jeeps said at the beginning about the permits in Beaulieu. Obviously, Main Road in Borum hasn't got any parking restrictions along it, so obviously they're very concerned that people will park there and obviously walk to the station. I just wondered if council would support probably parking restrictions being put along there.
I think anything like that, anybody, you can, a representation could be made to SEP and then they could carry out a review and then see if that was appropriate.
Yes, on, on any residence parking scheme, there's residents that want the parking restrictions and there's residents that it's not. So the residence parking scheme for the station has been placed on... So the residence parking scheme for the station has been placed on Beaulieu. And what will happen, there'll always be parking that takes place where it's unforeseen, that it's going to be done. And when that is, we can very quickly put a parking restriction in place. So at the moment, we've, we've got it where we think the parking will take place. And then if there's common parking and we know it's linked to the station, and residents want parking restrictions put in place, then we can quickly move to put those schemes in.
Yeah, obviously, there's obviously no properties along that first bit of Main Road. So obviously, it is quite a long stretch, which I think is why there's the concern. And obviously, with New Hall buying Borum House as well, obviously, you can have children going in and out of there as well. So I think that's just the main concern. But yeah, we will try and put something in. As long as this council will support it, it would be great. Thanks.
Okay, no other questions on this report? It's the recommendation from councillor Sherlock, agreed? Thank you. Right. Okay, so that's, that's moving on to the highlight of the evening, I'm sure. Amendments to the Constitution always has them rocking in the aisles. So there's a number of relatively minor changes, which we took to the working group on the Constitution, and which we're bringing forward to you this evening. It's mostly, well, one of the key things is clarifying distinction between executive and non-executive decision-making, particularly around financial arrangements, and the various items that are proposed. Tidies up the budget and policy framework refers to where some of the strategies are. And a number of other mostly tidying up exercises. Does anybody have any questions on the report? No? Is that agreed? Thank you. Right, item point one, councillor Moore, keep Sill governance.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm just going to introduce this item. It's the Community Infrastructure Levy Governance Review. I'd just like to, you've had the Cabinet paper obviously, and if you have any questions arising, please let me know. But I'd just like to outline simply a summary of the key changes to the Community Infrastructure Levy or Sill governance document. So decisions on the expenditure and the allocation of Sill funds are now going to be explicitly recognised as an executive function of the Cabinet. Some of the wording within has been streamlined, for example, paragraph 4.2, and some sections detailing specific forms and procedures have been removed to allow for those to be more easily updated. Funding allocation for strategic infrastructure is now going to be guided by the local plan, the infrastructure delivery plan, and the council's capital expenditure priorities, with an annual review to align with the council's capital programme. The community funding scheme adjustments to the contextual history of the scheme has been removed. So the history, the background, and the process and bid submissions are now more flexible, which allows the community funding panel to consider proposals as they come in, rather than twice a year. And details about the community funding panel's membership and war members' involvement has also been streamlined and clarified. So references are directing readers to the Constitution rather than listing specific individuals. These revisions just aim to improve the clarity and simplify the updates in the document, and ensure that the governance process is more aligned with our strategic priorities as an administration. You know, we'll, we always say we strive towards a fairer and more connected Chelmsford, and these changes to the Community Infrastructure Levy governance document should positively impact our communities and the funding of those communities going forwards. Are there any questions?
Councillor Highland.
Thank you. I just wanted to check, is there a recommendation coming from this Cabinet to governance and full councils to consider? Or are you seeking to remove governance and full council from considering these amendments?
It's an executive function. The allocation of resources under Sill is an executive function. Comes to, the decisions about the spending of Sill money comes to Cabinet. It's only major decisions go to council, over a million pounds.
So, sorry, these proposed changes to the Constitution. So you're making that decision based on the changes to the Constitution or as the Constitution was?
This isn't a constitutional document. This is a policy that stands alone. The Sill policy is not part of the council's constitution. It's a policy. Because it's executive changing that policy, like if you was changing a housing policy, it's for Cabinet. So it doesn't need to go to council to be approved. The thing it might be, you might have in your mind, is the previous policy did say certain decisions had to go to council. We identified that actually was incorrect, because those decisions should be taken by Cabinet. And that was, we had that with a decision that was taken on a strategic allocation. So that may be what you have in mind. So we're not changing the Constitution on that. We're changing the policy, the Sill policy.
Okay. And on page 41 of the 297 pack, there was a small change at the £100,000 to £214,000. Am I correct to understand that the executive decision has been taken out of that bracket and given to officers? So the £100,000 to £200,000 decisions are made by officers, not the executive. Is that correct?
That's, yeah, that was what we changed last year into the delegation to income and expenditure items, wasn't it? We did that.
Does it change in this document?
Yes, which is actually a constitutional decision. Okay, right. If there are no other questions, are those, oh, sorry.
Sorry, beg your pardon. On page 49 of the document, it talks about, let's see where I am. The E basis of procurement involvement, and the last paragraph talks about in the view of officers and service managers. Do they seek advice from Cabinet? Or are group leaders informed of risks and impact to those procurement items?
That's, you're asking a question on the previous item, aren't you, Constitution? We're now on the Sill paper, aren't you?
Okay, sorry. I'll, I'll put them to the council privately. Thank you.
Any other questions on the Sill governance? No? Is the report agreed? Are the recommendations agreed? Do you have to say something? Just nod.
Thank you.
Are they as well watching black and white? Right, 8.2 is the Essex Parking Guidance Standards.
Thank you, Chair. Now, this really is a tome, and I hope you've all thoroughly read the document. It's an impressive document indeed. It was commissioned through the Essex Planning Officers Association. It's an Essex-wide strategy or guidance. Really, we're looking ahead to the future and already seeing huge changes in the way people may be using private cars, EV charging, the need for accessible parking spaces. This has been thoroughly discussed through a very, a very productive meeting of Chelmsford Policy Board earlier this year, which can still be seen on YouTube if anyone watching or listening to the meeting has an interest. And I would just like to extend thanks to Jeremy Potter and his team, as ever, for coordinating the notes and being present at the Policy Board where this was discussed earlier this year. There are two options for Cabinet to consider, that we approve the updated Essex Parking Guidance and Standards document, or to not approve the updated Essex Parking Guidance and Standards document. We would very much hope that option one will be agreed, just to ensure that we make consistent decisions on all planning proposals and applications using the most up-to-date supporting evidence. And as discussed at the Policy Board meeting earlier this year, an option to amend the parking standards and guidance was not considered feasible or necessary in the context of this comprehensive report.
Any questions? No.
Done silence.
Ah, councillor Highland.
Excellent.
Just checking, I'm on the right agenda item. So the parking provision, as I understand the document, is going to be higher to serve larger dwellings in the lower connectivity areas, this hula hoop thing. Does this mean that developers can fit more houses into densely populated city locations instead of the parking provision?
I will defer to Mr Potter, who is, has an expert view on these matters.
Thank you. Excuse me. So, well, first of all, I mean, the existing guidance was horrendously outdated, 2009, predated all sorts of changes that have happened since that day. What the guidance does allow is a zonal approach, as councillor Highland's just indicated. And that provides a finer grain in determining how many spaces are required. And that depends on how connected those particular places are, rather than just having a blanket approach across the whole of Chelmsford. So it does allow for some flexibility in terms of places that are very well-connected, to see how, you know, how many spaces are required. If a, if a development site right next to a train station comes forwards, it may well be that in the balance, you know, the council may seek to maximise the opportunities for housing on there and forego some of the normal standards for, for parking. But I think what's important is that planning committee and decision-makers have the final say. We have regard to these guidance. They are the starting point. But as ever, the way we've framed the local plan policy is that we have regard to it. In the main, we will adhere to its provisions. However, there will be instances where there are very site-specific proposals which would necessitate a slight departure from that. And that would be in the gift of this council to determine what the best option is. So I think it gives us really good flexibility, but it gives us also, as councillor Moore says, a really good consistent starting point and an up-to-date one. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to more genuinely affordable homes in the city centre. Thank you.
Aren't we all? Well, I don't know, we are anyway. Right, is that, is it? Yeah. And is that report agreed? All right. Thank you very much. That was parking standards. Something else about parking, different type of parking, or not parking, waiting rather than parking at Beaulieu Park train station back there, this time in taxi rank permits.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So the Beaulieu Park train station is due to open and become operational this year. Chelmsford City Council own the land allocated to the new station taxi rank at Beaulieu Park's train station, and will manage the rank. It has been proposed that the use of the taxi rank by a Hackney carriage driver's vehicles be chargeable. Only those taxis who are permitted by the council would be allowed to use the rank. As the landowner, the city council can charge a fee for an individual to access the land. The proposed fees are laid out in paragraph 1.6. Following a public consultation on the proposed scheme and consideration of the responses by regulatory committee, I seek Cabinet's approval to approve the introduction of the taxi rank permit scheme on the terms recommended by the regulatory committee, and delegate the Director of Public Services to issue such permits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think you had a question, councillor Bonnet, was it?
It was on 9.2.
Oh, right, yes, okay. Any questions on this? Yes, councillor Jeeps.
Thank you, Chair. Just struck me here, is there a drop-off and pick-up point going to be incorporated into? I just noticed every time we come to council, the back of the theatre and the thing is used as that for the current railway station and bus station. And obviously, that causes quite a lot of traffic congestion. So that's to be incorporated into. And is that going to be free or chargeful?
I'm not quite sure. I'll defer to, is it Michael or Liz? Okay, thank you.
We can all answer.
Yeah, there is a pick-up and drop-off area, and it is free.
Thank you very much.
Question. Yes, who will enforce, say if a taxi from somewhere else without such a permit arrives, who will enforce taking action against that?
Yes, mould, yeah.
Well, for a start, they shouldn't be operating within a different district where they're licensed, so that would be an offence. And if we had evidence of that, then we could obviously, we could obviously deal with that. There will be staff, there will be Chelmsford City Council SEP staff on site, so they'll be able to gather any evidence of that and feed that back to us.
Okay, anybody else? No? Okay. Is that report agreed? Thank you. Right. Review of Empty Homes, 9.2.
Okay, thank you. The review of the empty home strategy is to enable better use of the staff resource available to bring empty properties back into use. This change of approach will focus on properties that have been empty for shorter periods, increasing the likelihood of the properties being reoccupied with less intervention and renovation works. The priority for the Housing Standards Team is to deliver the council's mandatory legal obligations to improve housing conditions, investigating complaints from residents living in potentially hazardous conditions, and managing its licensing responsibilities. For example, for houses in multiple occupation and caravan sites. Additional obligations are set out in paragraph 1.3 of the report. The dealing with empty homes is not a statutory duty. A council's duty to intervene would only be required when the property is causing a statutory nuisance or in a state of collapse. The council's empty home strategy was last reviewed in 2018 and is based on a 2012 government toolbox. More recent 2023 guidance from the Local Government Association needs to be incorporated. This review of the strategy is necessary and proposed changes are outlined in the report. This is also an opportunity to draw the strategy in line with the council's housing strategy, as mentioned earlier. The LGA guidance indicates the most successful approach is not to target homes that have been empty the longest, but those that have been recently, that have most recently triggered homes. Sorry. The LGA guidance indicates the most successful approach is not to target homes that have been empty the longest, but those that have most recently triggered a council tax premium, as these property owners are more likely to engage. The reason for the existence of empty homes is complex, and each property has a story attached to it, as why it may not be occupied. In short, the proposed changes can be summarised as follows. Reduce the staff resource dedicated to dealing with empty homes so that officers can focus on the council's statutory housing requirements. And adopt the recommendations of the LGA guidance to focus attention on those properties empty for two years and below, rather than long-term empty properties. In conclusion, it is recommended that the council's empty home strategy to bring back empty homes into use, as outlined in the report, is approved. Thank you.
Councillor Bonnet.
I've got a couple, if that's okay. So the first one, in this report, it says there's 1,000 to 1,200 unoccupied and unfurnished properties that are designated as empty. And then it goes on to say additional properties around 4,500 are furnished and empty. These are the properties that be in charged an extra council tax premium from April 2025. Can you clarify how many are now paying the double council tax?
Okay, I haven't got those figures, but perhaps officers, officers might have them.
No, we don't have that, but we can certainly find that out and feed that information back to you.
Thank you. And the second one is slightly at the other end of the scale. An example, so if there was a property that was empty, but someone was registered as living there and paying council tax, obviously at a single person's rate. That is obviously not as it should be. And I just wondered if it's very clear, and the council realised that that person was absent, how they would exactly... how they would exactly pursue that? Because obviously, you're not getting the income that you should get.
Thank you. I'm not sure that I really understand that question.
So, if there's a property where someone is registered as living there on the electoral roll, and they are paying council tax, but obviously at a reduced rate because only one person is allegedly living there, if that person isn't living there and clearly isn't living there, like the house is overgrown with brambles and there's no evidence that anyone has been through the front door, how, if the council acknowledged that, yes, that is absent, how can they enforce receiving the council tax?
Okay. I understand the question. Did you understand?
Yeah, we could all have a go at this one there.
This is a revenues and benefits question. And that's my portfolio. So, I think basically what you're saying is that, let's just speculate that you've got two people, a couple, living in property A, and there's a property B. So, they pay council tax on property A, or should pay council tax on property A. And property B is empty, so they should be subject to premium rates. If one of them claims to be living there, you've got two single people occupying each, and they pay less. That involves telling lies. So, clearly, that is something that we would want to pick up. We do have systems checking to identify incorrect statements in relation to council tax liability. And we recover money or put people onto the right basis. I don't have the specific answer to that exact scenario, but I'm happy to talk to you afterwards about that. But it is the Revenues and Benefits Department that would be dealing with that.
So, basically, it's if a person is living there, one person, and we don't know where that person was, for example, they're obviously paying the lesser rate. And if the council acknowledges that the house is unoccupied, what does happen in that case? Sorry, I didn't phrase the original one perhaps.
That's the specific scenario. I don't have an answer to tonight. But I can speak to officers. We can follow up in relation to that specifically.
Okay.
Councillor Armstrong.
Thank you, I think, for the report. So, although it's not a statutory duty, I think it is a moral duty, considering the sort of quoted housing crisis that we do bring as many back into use as possible. And I appreciate officers' experience in knowing what they may feel may be the easiest to bring back into possible. So, I don't want to undermine that. I would love for them to have more resources. But the report doesn't give any mitigation for particular cases. So, there's no mitigation for heritage. I emailed the heritage officer and asked had he been consulted about the report, and he said he hadn't. That was up to yesterday. Maybe he has now, and the planning department on the heritage aspects of things. So, there's no mitigation for that. And most notable case, obviously, in Danbury, we've got Wickham House, which has been abandoned since before I was born. It's coming up to its fortieth birthday of being abandoned. So, it's a real serious thing. It's also a case where one house has planning permission to become three. So, and again, in our trying to bring properties back into use, that really has a, not only the factor of heritage, but also is there's no mitigation for sites that may be really good for affordable housing or bringing back into use for multiple housing within this policy. It basically says you do two years of sending letters, three letters, and you give up. And that's why I'd like if it could be worked upon to have caveats for the most special cases. I use Wickham House as three that are about abandoned for over ten in my ward. And several of them either have emotive historical value or a motive that they are really dangerous for and have social impacts in how they're benefiting people. And I know the report slightly mentions that. But again, if there could be a clause put in for serious public integration and health of areas, again, if it's a house abandoned in the middle of nowhere, there's less risk to houses that are immediately around the neighbours. That seemed to be picked up better before in the system, and now seems lost. And it's purely on a numbers game in two years. And then just on that whole moral point, it just, when people are feeling so upset about the mass of new building on beautiful green areas, although housing number-wise isn't important, it really does have an emotional impact when the house next door to you has been abandoned forty years and had planning although lapsed to become three houses. And that's a real emotive thing. And again, on those cases, it's trying to put in a framework to have a clause or a mitigation in those cases. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate there are moral issues as well. And long-term empty properties do have emotive issues for both the owners and also those surrounding them. I don't know if Lewis has anything to add with regard to the heritage issues.
I mean, I think it's just a case of being realistic with what we're able to do. As the report outlines, the things that we legally have to do have to take priority. And those things in the coming, in the next six months are going to increase more with the introduction of the Renters' Rights Act, which is going to put an even greater strain on the team. And I think it's just about trying to outline what we think we're able to do with the resources that we have. And I do understand the issues that, without wanting to go into details about particular addresses, you know, the issues that are around them. And as councillor earlier said, each property has got a story, and there's a lot of things going on in the background. But I do take the point. And if there's a way that we can incorporate that, but we have to be realistic with what resource that we have to deal with, empty homes and all the other things that we legally have to deal with.
I think we all share the frustration, don't we? And, but as Mr Mould says, we have to concentrate on what we have to do. And unfortunately, there are lots of things that we'd like to do that we don't have the resources to do right across the council. And that's an issue for all councils. And so, we've got to focus on making sure that our public health standards team have got the resources that they need to do to do that statutory job of making sure that houses that are occupied are in reasonable quality. And we don't have the resources, frustratingly, because it costs an awful lot of money. Just, I mean, when councillor Whitehead sat in this chair, and I'm sitting over there, he presented a report. It's been a difficult thing for years to track down owners of empty buildings. It takes an awful lot of time and money. And we need to use that time and money on improving housing standards where we can. Yeah.
Just a couple of things. So, there are cases where we'd previously CPO'd, and then they were in process of CPO, but we'd paused or held. Are we completely dropping all of those previous cases where we did have good leads? And we're at the point that we are fully entitled legally to take action? And so, just, again, we're definitely not able to put in a clause for listed buildings and non-designated heritage assets within this report, because that would help us protect... Nobody wants to see Chelmsford's icons be lost and not have a sensible policy route because we think, oh, we can save two small 1980s properties, but ignore the 1700s property that could actually, in theory, be three.
I think we're straying into areas outside of the report. And also, we can't talk about individual properties. So, I'm going to ask that we move on, actually. Particularly, councillor Jeeps has now got a question.
Thank you very much, Chair. It's just a thought that struck me. If we're doubling because people have not got the property sold, is it possible to penalise them further for some of these properties that sit there for so long? You know, that you have a sliding scale of increase in council tax as you go, as a disincentive for just leaving them empty all the time? Just a thought.
We do. We've passed, a council has passed motions increasing the council tax on empty properties to the maximum. I think councillor Whitehead brought one back in, if I'm remembering correctly. I think you brought the first hundred percent increase. And then subsequently, we've had, I think, in the last six years, two reports that have increased further. So, we're already charging the statutory maximum that we can. So, there is no further pressure. I get where you're coming from. Without doing any work, can we just put pressure on people, financial pressure on people, to resolve the issue? And we're doing the maximum that we're permitted to under law already.
Thank you very much.
Free-for-all now.
Well, he did mention my name, to be fair, and as did you. But no, I mean, I'm in great sympathy with the situation. As you say, we looked at it before. And there's 700,000 all over England, apparently, that are empty. The moral situation is one thing, and the statutory one is another one. It's like enforcement generally. The whole thing is a complete shambles from beginning to end. The law is varied. There's all sorts of statutory ways you can go. There's empty home legislation and so on. But unless you've got a team of people who spend all their days, nights and everything else chasing it, you won't achieve what you want. And given that, statutally, we have to house the homeless, logically, the residents put one on one together and say, well, that's why, why aren't you doing it? And we need to make sure, and maybe we need to tone your report slightly in that direction to say why you're not doing it. Because it's sort of buy one, get one free at the moment if you're not careful, as it reads. Sorry, I'm not, you know, being critical because the principle, I understand. But if you're saying, well, just leave for two years because nothing's going to happen, that's probably not the best sort of message to send to the public. And I think if we could adjust our wording slightly of our policy to make sure that it says, we are conscious of this, but statutory, we haven't got that. If you want to blame the government for not giving you resources, yeah, of course, I understand that too, really. But it is the residents who knock. I mean, the one that was mentioned earlier is, in fact, in my ward, really, and the one with the brambles. But we've had all, in the past, ones with fridges in the front garden, all the sort of usual rubbish that you see. And if we make sure that we are telling residents we're doing our best, which you don't think we do in here. We sort of says, we earn more money this way, let's do it this way. Really, sorry. Short version of it. But you may just adjust your sort of understanding for the public. That might be of help, that's all I would say.
Sorry, can I just, in one point four, it does say that a council's duty to intervene would be required when the property is causing a statutory nuisance or in a state of collapse. So, there is mention of statutory duties. And if a property is a nuisance, then the council will act.
I think we've done this, I'd say, we've done this to some length. Is there a new point that you really need to make?
Thank you, Chair. So, how will this particular change, how will that success be monitored? Is what I'm interested in. Getting more empty homes into use is, I think, the outcome we all want to achieve. So, how will this light-touch-do-less-get-more approach? How will the success be proven? And how will it be measured? And two particular areas that was just brought to my attention there was properties in probate and ownership challenges may be on your list of targets. How do you deal with them? Do you just park them and say, wait for the official result?
Okay. Thank you, Lewis. Can you answer?
Well, to start off with the probate addresses, I mean, as the report says, at any one time, there's obviously a significant number that are going through that process. And they generally, most of them, resolve themselves within a year or sometimes a bit more, just because that's how long the process takes. They're not necessarily the ones that we're looking at, because they're generally the ones that, I think it says in the report, that are in the churn, that are constantly, there's more coming in, there's more coming out. I think to measure how well we're doing,